This conference will now be recorded.
Oh, I see.
Okay, so now it is actually 6:31 now. So we will open the scheduled public hearing for community development. Do we have, we have no callers, I don't see any callers. There are no, Amy, just can you confirm that we have no submissions?
Well, I've had nobody, excuse me, no one writing, but I see that we've got two or, we have two callers. So the public hearing, right, so the public hearing is to address the, oh, am I okay now? Yes?
Go ahead.
So the public hearing, this public hearing is to discuss for, you know, any comments regarding the annual 2010, 2020 entitlement allocation. And that is the 740,000 that, you know, was awarded back in the spring. This is not the COVID allocation. So.
So you have no, there's no communications, right?
I had no communications. I don't know if either one of these callers wants to speak.
Is there anyone on the line that would like to speak?
Hello, this is Clark Richters.
Hi, Clark.
Yes, I'm, I'm really frustrated right now, the way I'm, I'm trying to voice my opinion. And I just heard from, and I believe it's somebody from Community Development. I put comments in for Community Development that never got added to the minutes. And so I want to speak now and my frustration of this whole trying to get my public comment in.
Is this about community development?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
And how the money is, the, the money, how, how the money is, and I understand it's like there's a lot that has to go around with very little money. But I think it's really important for Kingston because of what we're going through now with the covert virus, to really inform the senior citizens and utilize that money to provide the access to the television. Not only for the online, but, and I see, I've just read, there's actually new business saying that, I'm not sure how the property from the Planet Wings has to relate to the Community Development Fund. But I guess we're gonna, you're gonna discuss that after I, I put my comment. So my thing is like Kingston should put more effort into funding the public access TV and, and other things and really trying to get the community involved with the government. Because it's very, now that it's very frustrating, because it seems like you, you have to, if you're able to write your words on paper, then you can make the comment. If not, I mean, I, I didn't know until now. I mean, this will be easier for me to call in to voice my comment. I mean, but that's, they really should be more advocate for that. Because that's what government's there for, right? All right, so that's, that's mine. And I, I would say that maybe in the future of government funding, block grants, community development, they could put money into the, the public access, which will inform the public of what's going on with the meetings and other things. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Clark. Is there anyone else on the line that would like to speak? Okay, can everyone hear me? Looks like just about everybody's face is, okay, good. All right, anyone on the line would like to speak? Third call, anyone on the line that would like to speak about community development? Okay, and with that, we will close the public hearing. Do we need a motion to, to close this?
I don't know.
Does anybody know?
I don't think so, do we?
I don't, I don't think so.
Forum or anything, so.
No, no, you just adjourn at state of time.
Okay, all right, so we will close the public hearing. The time is 6:36. We thank those who participated. All right, public hearing is closed. And we're not, our stream is, we don't have to go close and go back to the, to our regular meeting, right? We can just stay on.
Right, yes, you can just, I count it as one meeting.
Okay, all right, so now it is 6:37. I will call the meeting of the Community Development to order. Let's see here. We have Jeffrey Morel here, Douglas Coop from the committee, Rita Worthington, Amanda Brooke is a committee member, and Amy Peterson, who is with Community Development at the meeting. And I believe the mayor is on the line. I don't see his face, but I see his initials up there. And Andrea Short is in charge of the meeting. There he is, all right. Okay, has everyone had a chance to read the minutes from our previous meeting? And I will accept the motion to accept them. Motion by Jeffrey, second. Second by Rita, thank you. Anyone oppose, all in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, unanimous to accept. Unfinished business in general orders, I don't believe we have any unfinished business, do we? I think it's all new business.
Yeah, it's all, it's all new business unless you want to discuss the $15,000 remaining from Rise Up under unfinished business or under new business.
Yeah, I would, we really haven't discussed that, so I would, I would call that new business. All right, so that's item four on the agenda. So Steve, Mayor, do you want to speak about this?
Do you want to start with my proposal to, for Pine Grove? Is that what you said, Steve? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, no, I'd be happy.
The only business I believe we have.
Okay, great. And I don't know if it's, how familiar everyone is with the Pine Grove project. And I don't know how complicated it would be to be able to allow me to share my screen. I could give everybody a quick overview of the Pine Grove, Planet Wings project and just what it's all about, and then we can talk a little bit. I think one of the things with working with Mandy and Amy, you know, on our community development projects, we've had some really great relationships built with the HUD regional rep. And in those discussions, you know, we've been able to have a more broad discussion about what types of eligible activities our community development funds can be used for. And one of the things that we've really focused on recently, especially with the downturn in the economy and, you know, the, the budget situation that we're looking at, is what ways could we potentially use community development funds that have yet to be spent on public infrastructure? Anyway, anywhere from sidewalks to, you know, roadway improvements to sewer projects. And, you know, what I'd like to discuss with you all tonight is this first project that we would like to bring forward. And then we can talk a little bit more generally about it, the kind of the next project that I have, that we haven't, we don't have all of this, the data yet to, to, to bring to you yet, but I can talk a little bit about a project that we're looking at in Midtown in Ward Four. But, you know, first, the concept that, you know, I wanted to, to bring up related to Planet Wings and Pine Grove and is that a year and a half ago, two years ago, almost, we proposed, we purchased the building, we proposed to knock down the building and to allow it to go through this infrastructure planning and, and then build out. Thanks to a grant that we received from Kevin Cahill, we have about $750,000 to reconfigure Pine Grove, Prince Street, Grand Street, and how it intersects with Broadway. And as part of that process, we had to do some asbestos testing. And so DPW had that asbestos testing done. We realized that there is asbestos in the roof tiles. And so we need to do some rehabilitation work to get that asbestos out of the building before we tear it down with DPW forces. And then, you know, to kind of, so we budgeted that money, we spent it, we budgeted about 25,000. We ended up only spending about five. The rest of that went back into the general fund. And over the last year and a half, some prices have gone up. You know, the, the plans have become more firm with the design. And we now have a better sense of what the actual cost estimates are. And we, upon thinking with the staff about the community development funds, we realized that instead of putting this burden on us as a local municipality, we may be able to use some of these federal funds to help supplant the costs of this project, which will reduce the amount that the city would have to bond for this project and could really help, you know, just reduce the exposure that our taxpayers will have. And, you know, as you guys may have talked about in past meetings, this gives us an opportunity to also spend down some of our CBPG funds that we've, you know, had kind of stuck, you know, over the years that we haven't been able to spend down as maybe rapidly as HUD would want us to. So this could help us get kind of a shovel-ready project, you know, moving very quickly. And so that's the, kind of the general overview. And again, I don't know, I haven't really used the screen sharing feature too much, so I don't know if I would actually have the capabilities to do that from where I am, to be able to show you the intersection and what some of the.
Steve, I can, I can make you a presenter and get you to share the screen if you'd like.
Yeah, sure, why don't we do that if you don't mind?
You're a presenter, so you should be able to see on the bottom where it has like the mic camera screen, now you should be able to share.
How's that look? Can everybody see that?
Oh, wow, beautiful.
All right, so we are now at the intersection of Prince, Grand, Broadway, and Pine Grove. If you can see my mouse, the current Planet Wings location is basically in this box that I'm drawing, right in this general area. And so the concept is to be able to knock down the building. It will realign this intersection, so when you're at Pine Grove, you will now be able to go straight across the intersection onto Prince. Grand will be located here. You'll come to basically a stop sign here at Grand to be able to either turn, to come out onto Broadway, or to turn the other direction and head off into, onto Prince. This is the, you know, one of the more dangerous intersections on Broadway. In the last five years, there have been 40 traffic accidents in this intersection, including a couple which were car versus pedestrian. And so along our Broadway corridor, this is one of the, the more dangerous and difficult, you know, spots to, to get in and out of and to cross. One of the, the things that this project will do is repurpose some of the kind of pavement in front of the Millard Building, as well as some of the current parking lot of the former Planet Wings next to Dallas Hot Wieners, and turn it into some green space. None of this would be what you would consider a park, so there would be no swings or playgrounds or anything like that. And as part of the design, and again, this is all very conceptual, but this is, I'm going to pull up what the, the rendering that they've actually came up with. And it's a little small, probably on your screens to be able to make it out, but this is basically the area next to Dallas Hot Wieners. And the concept is to just have a little area with some, you know, picnic tables and maybe a little area for people to sit, as well as some trees and some plantings, you know, along the Dallas Hot Wieners building, to just really bring kind of just an opportunity for some outdoor dining and/or some outdoor, you know, meeting space for people and to really just kind of beautify, you know, that, that intersection. And so you'll see there's also some sidewalk work, as well as some additional on-street parking, so that there wouldn't be any parking loss in front of Dallas or things like that, as well as some additional parking here on the back. And so, again, this is just a conceptual for what that, you know, could look like. And, you know, these are just some additional designs related to, you know, kind of what the trees would look like along the sidewalk and things like that. And so I think one of the things that our designers here at GPI have tried to do is to just kind of give folks a sense of, you know, what this would look like and how this intersection could kind of be redeveloped. And my proposal today, and again, I'm not sure how you, you know, folks, you know, what you would need to be able to kind of, you know, support this project tonight versus me coming back at another meeting, but I wanted to introduce the idea and say that, you know, at this point, you know, upon talking to the staff and realizing, you know, the, the funds needed to do the asbestos abatement, to be able to do some of this green space improvements, to be able to help build the sidewalk, in total, we'd like to request 150,000 out of the, the CBPG funds that, you know, we have unspent from previous years. And so this is kind of the, the start of that conversation. And so I wanted to see if there were any questions, thoughts, you know, on this. And then I could also then talk briefly about another project that I've been talking to Rita about in terms of a sewer project on Prospect Street, that we would like to be kind of the, the, the second infrastructure project. We're in the process right now of working with DPW to get quotes on that work. There's a two-block section between Greensville Avenue and Henry Street where the sewer is failing, as well as many of the sewer connections to the homes. And this street has already been kind of dug up by Central Hudson and has been, you know, prepared really for us to do the sewer work so that we can actually pave the road. And so we think that community development block grant funds would also be a, a good supplement. It will not be able to fund that entire project, but similar to this, you know, a couple hundred thousand from the community development funds could go a long way to help support the, the city's bonding efforts, to be able to help connect, you know, this new sewer in the, in this neighborhood. And so this project, as you can see, is a little bit more designed and a little bit more shovel-ready, but I would hope that by next month's community development meeting, we will have a proposal for what we would need from, you know, these, this, this funding to be able to kind of move that project forward, which, again, will help us, you know, spend down some of the funds from previous years that, you know, HUD is somewhat concerned that we haven't been able to do yet.
Question. Steve, can I ask a question?
Yep.
So, um, two questions. So Mayor Noble, so the grant that we got for the Pine Grove intersection project, are you saying, one, that wasn't enough money to do this whole project? And the other question is, with the picnic tables, would that be, is that, would that be city-owned or would that be specifically used for dining for the Dallas Hot Wieners?
Yeah, so the first question, you know, current engineers' estimates, you know, again, based on, you know, this proposed project is about 1.3 million to do everything that you kind of see here. But that does not include doing anything more than just grass, basically in these green spaces at that cost. We have about 750,000 in the grant. And so, you know, we would be coming to the city to ask for, you know, additional funds. And this CBPG funding would help supplement that to, to reduce, you know, any tax, local taxpayer dollars going into this project. And then, you know, I think that the, so that was kind of the, the first question. And can you just remind me again what your second question was? Sorry.
Sorry, I had to get off mute. You said that you were planning on putting out some picnic tables and things like that for outdoor dining? So who, whose property would that be?
Yeah, so this would be basically a, a city-owned, you know, park, if you will, or like, you know, where folks that, you know, anyone could use it, it would be open to the community. And again, it has not been designed yet. You know, this conceptual, you know, rendering that they've created is just a, a concept. But this would be, you know, they have a little area where there's seating and some patio, but this is again, up for the community to kind of, we're on this EngageKingston.com website, you know, we're actually taking feedback right now from the community about what this could look like and what would be the best uses of it. But this would be open public space that is not designated to any one business or any one, you know, person in the community.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Mayor. Does anybody have any, any questions of the mayor? Doug?
Yeah, this is Alderman Doug Coop. Mayor, did you say there were, and something like over $100,000 of unspent community development funds?
Yes, and so.
Why, why do we have so much, so much unspent CBPG funds when everybody's clamoring for this money?
Yeah, and so, you know, when, the, when Mandy and Amy and I, you know, have started to look back at some of the allocations, one of the biggest areas that we have, we've put a lot of money aside over the last four or five years for, you know, housing rehabilitation. And there is, you know, a good portion of funds that not be able to be spent either because of difficulty finding, you know, homeowners to utilize the programs, or it's been capacity issues. And all of this has happened mostly like kind of before all of our time here. But my understanding is that there's, you know, 600 and 700,000 dollars available for us as a council and, you know, our administration to kind of allocate so that we can, you know, spend that funding that hasn't been spent over the last five.
Did I hear you right? You said there is $600,000 of unspent community development funds?
That is what we have found, yeah.
That's astounding. Why can't we spend this money?
That's why I'm here, to try to spend the money.
You're here to help. Well, you know, I really, of course, I support the whole, the whole concept of the intersection, no doubt about it, it's neat, it's a great idea, and I wanted to go forward. But are CBPG funds, is it proper to spend these funds on, on this project when we, I'm just astounded that there, that, that, that there's so much unspent money? And, you know, should be spent on this project or should we reallocate it to some of the other worthy organizations that are really submitting good proposals for money? I just find it.
Well, so Doug, so that's one of the complications with the community development funding, is that we are actually only allowed to spend 15% of our annual allocation on public programs. So, so those are the nonprofits that come to us every year. All the rest of the money is basically then designated, is designated then for public infrastructure. We have then taken a, a portion of that every year and put that toward kind of private housing rehab, and that is what has not been able to garner enough, you know, projects to be able to spend down the money quick enough. And so most communities spend a lot of their CBPG money on public infrastructure. Over the years, we've chosen, you know, even before my time to not do that. And I think on our further conversation with HUD, is that I would like to start, to have us start spending more of our money on public infrastructure, everything from DPW projects, projects like this, a few projects related to, you know, our parks and things like that. And so I think that this has been an untapped resource for us. And I think that we, we really just need to kind of start rethinking, recognizing that we are still limited to that 15% for all the other really worthy public programs that we just can't, we just can't give them really more than that.
Are you coming with us tonight for the, with a specific committee report or resolution, proposed resolution to do this? Or what, what are we doing tonight?
So, I mean, again, that is, so this is, we just found out about, you know, these opportunities, you know, on our most recent calls. So I don't know if we've had a chance to put together a committee report. I do have the estimates from the project, and so that's how I was able to come up with that 150,000. And so I have that estimate. I mean, we could put that in a committee report and provide that to you. I could also come back next month with, you know, whatever else you need. Again, this project is not happening tomorrow, but, you know, I also have the ability to come back next month. I really just wanted to see, you know, your process and really, you know, chat with all of you about this and, you know, see, we, we are in the process of reallocating funds or, you know, for 2019, if I'm correct, me or Amanda. And so this, there's an opportunity for us to add that to the 2019 allocation change that you guys are working on already, so that we wouldn't have to go back and reallocate again. So I guess the timing is, you know, appropriate to, to move forward now. But again, Mandy and Amy have been working on that more specifically than I am, so I'm, I'm not really sure about the timing of this.
Can I jump in? Steve, please.
Does anybody have any questions? Rita, do you have a question?
I do, I do, and a comment. So, you know, the mayor mentioned about a possible project up in Ward Four. And while I'm all for it, I would definitely be on board if we could get some monies up here. I wonder though, with a lot of these money, the CBPG monies that are, that is given, is a, I think I heard you mention that it is allocated or put in a fund for housing. I'm wondering, you know, in the current climate that we're in right now, in COVID-19, where people are struggling to pay their rent, could any of that money go toward that, helping the residents with that? You know, with people that can't pay their rent, especially if that money is designed for housing. And I know I'm cutting up, you know, I'm, I'm doing myself damage here because I want some of that money in Midtown, but I'm just kind of looking at the, the greater picture. And if you tell me that it cannot be used for that, then I'm all on board with what you're, what you're proposing.
Yeah, my understanding as of now is that we actually, we have 150,000 put aside for rental assistance. And so we, you guys have already created that program. And, you know, I do think that if that 150,000 is depleted, there is additional money in the community development allocation that we can continue to fund rental assistance as a program. And there are many communities across the country that have had and continue to have. And so each year, we put about $250,000, or have been putting 100, 250,000 into housing rehab. So each year, we can now continue to invest in housing rental assistance. And so you guys just created that program in the 2020 CB, the extra coronavirus aid. And so that's the first time we've created that rental assistance program. And now I would propose, going forward, that every year, the council continues to put money into that fund as it's depleted. I do think it's going to take us some time to get through the 150,000 in rental assistance so that by, you know, the 2021 allocation process, you know, it'll be perfect timing for us to be able to replenish that fund. So I do think that there's money to do all of the priorities that, you know, we, we want as a community. We get, we get about eight hun, almost $800,000 a year in CB. We get, we get about eight, almost $800,000 a year in CBG money.
Yeah, I just. I just want to make a comment and Jeffrey. And then Andrea. I just want to make sure we're not getting too far ahead of ourselves here. You know, I would like to resolve really the issue that's on the floor now, and that's about Planet Wings. So, you know, let's see if we can finalize that before we get on for, you know, to other discussions about other neighborhoods. You know, those are all in theory right now. I haven't seen any communications or anything. Now, you know, we voted on the intersection, the Planet Wings. I mean, I would definitely like to see this move forward. I mean, I really think that's an awful intersection. It needs to be done. You know, this is a way, you know, perhaps we can do it, you know, using less public funds than this. However, that being said, you know, this is being kind of floated to us, you know, kind of late as the mayor just acknowledged. I don't know if everybody's comfortable with the amount of time we've had to consider this. Or, as the mayor said, would everybody be more comfortable tabling this to next month? So, you'd have more of a chance to, to discuss this and, you know, really kind of think about it a little bit harder. You know, than making, make a decision tonight when we're really, you know, kind of hearing about it for the first time in detail. How does everybody feel? Does everybody feel like moving forward tonight? Or should we put it aside? I'm seeing ups and downs, but I don't know what up and down means. I think Jeffrey put his thumb up first. So, Jeffrey, what does your thumb up mean?
I would be in favor of taking a little bit more time to think about it.
Okay, Doug feels the same?
Yes, I do.
How does that, Rita, how do you feel about that?
You know, I, one way or the other, I really don't have a feeling about it. I know that the mayor said that he'd be perfectly okay to come back to us next month and discuss it again. So, I'm fine with that.
Okay, Andrea, you got your hand up. Go ahead. I can't hear you. Can anybody hear Andrea?
No.
Andrea, we don't hear you. Andrea, can you hear me? Yeah, we got a little motion. All right. Andrea, I'm mute. Nobody could hear what you said.
It goes with what you're talking about. Mayor, I think you mentioned.
We lost you again. Your mute, your mute keeps going on. I don't see anything on my phone.
Nor mine.
Oh, there we go. Okay. Do you want to write out what you want to say? Okay, Mayor, Andrea would like to know if the sewer estimates will be ready by next month for us. Can we have that information?
I know that, I asked the superintendent to work on that for me. They, we do have a lot of information in the area around Prospect Street because we've done a redesign on Greenpool Avenue of the sewer, and we've done design work on Henry Street on the sewer. And so, it's kind of about linking Prospect Street connects to two of them. And so, we, I'm hopeful that we will have by the next meeting because I think your meeting is before the end of September, right? And so, I would hope that by the time we're here again, that we can have the Planet Wings concept flushed out for you officially. And then, I would have a proposal for Prospect Street. That would be my goal, to be able to have that to you so that they both could be then discussed. You know, and I think that that's, 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 that's a good hope on my part.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I would think that's the prudent decision. We really don't have enough information to do anything tonight. You know, this is a good start. We got some good info. But, you know, I think we would be well-served to table this and discuss it next month when we have a lot more information. Jeffrey?
Yes, on that, I'm just, I'm just conflicted about this because I know we had already approved 400,000 for the purchase of this property and 750 and another grant. And I'm just not sure, CBG is supposed to be to serve low to moderate income community. I'm not sure how, you know, this is a part that doesn't have a playground. I don't know how this would fit into the, to the intent of CBG as opposed to putting all of that money into the sewer process, which can go to not only fix the sewers. If we could put, if this money was intended for housing rehab, I think we could have homeowners apply to replace the lead line connection from their homes to the street so that then the streets can get paved. And I think that would be more, more in line with the intent of CBG. So, I don't know. I think I would be in favor of putting all the money into that project instead.
Okay, Mayor, do you want to respond to that? You know, Jeffrey's question about, you know, the reality of using these funds for something like this?
I mean, all I can say is that, you know, we as a community qualify for CBG funding because of our, you know, low to moderate income population. And I think that, you know, this, when we look at public infrastructure and, you know, our sidewalks and roadways serve everyone, including low to moderate income, especially across the street from the YMCA, and it is still in Midtown. And so, you know, I think that this is in an area that qualifies, you know, for these projects. But it is, you know, it's a decision that the council does have to make. I just will say that right now, you know, the restrictions and requirements on the housing rehab programs because of the federal funding and because of the bureaucracy that residents have to jump through to be able to use funding that we have, it is difficult. And that is one of the reasons why each year we have allocated $250,000 for housing rehab. And each year, on a good year, we would complete maybe five projects. And so, we just, we don't have enough applicants that are able to, one, meet the, the income and guidelines and still be, and be able to do the lead and asbestos abatement and to take care of all of the environmental issues on a per-property basis. And so, that's one of the conversations that I had last week with both Alderman Worthington and DPW is that putting funding into sewer laterals is a really good idea. But if you're tying them to a broken sewer line, they don't really do much good. And so, in this case, we have to kind of look at the bigger picture of, you know, replacing the whole sewer, which also then replaces, replaces the laterals. We also then don't need to necessarily go to each individual household and have each household apply. We can do it as a public infrastructure project and then, you know. So, I think that that's, that's just, it is all just though, like, we want to get this money out, you know, to wherever it's needed. And I know that that's a kind of a community-led process, and that's why we have both the community development committee and the guidance committee. And I'm just putting some ideas out there to be able to help further, you know, what we're trying to do. But it's well heard.
Okay, yeah. I mean, I think this is a good reason why we're tabling it because everybody's really going to have to make a decision on this, you know, whether they think this is appropriate or not. So, I, you know, I think, you know, the month will do us good to, to think this over. Any other questions about this? Okay. Let me see. We will move to item five announcements. Are there any announcements? Amy, do you have any, any kind of announcements or anything?
The only announcement is that Rise Up Kingston has ceded their 15,000. They are unable to execute the program as they had hoped. And I don't know, you know, you've got several options. You could put it with the 80,000 and set it aside for the future. Or you had, when you voted on it initially, your vote was to use the 15,000 for them to buy laundry cards and, you know, the plastic, like the debit cards, laundromats, and baby items. But the laundry cards are an ineligible expense and the baby items have to be part of a program. So, you can, I sent, I thought it was a detailed email of your options. You can add it on to those who have already been awarded. You could set it aside because, you know, you've got the 80,000 from families still not allocated that Mandy will put in as rental assistance for an amendment. We still have not filed the amendment. Or, you know, the mayor had requested you to consider giving some of that money to Center for Creative Education. So, those, you know, if you want to look at what you had already awarded and to whom, if you want to, you know, add on to someone who did not get their full ask or whatever.
Are you done, Amy?
Yes, I'm done.
Okay. All right. Does anybody have any, Jeffrey?
I would be in favor of adding this to the 80,000 that we have for a second, for a second round of rental assistance. I think this is, is something that we're going to have to deal with for a while. And I think people are going to need assistance more in the future. We don't know how long this, this crisis is going to go on for and when people are going to get back to their jobs. So, I would be in favor of using this additional money for that purpose.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. Yeah, we really don't know what the future is going to hold here. And yeah, I mean, I think there's going to be another round of people really needing some funding. So, I would be in favor of that. How does everybody feel about that?
I have a question. I have a question, Steve.
Rita?
Um, Amy, could you tell us what the initial ask was for CCE?
Um, hold on, I will pull it up for you. CCE had originally asked for, let's see, I think it was 11,000 and change.
Okay.
Um, I can send you, if you want, their budget.
No, I just wanted to know what they initially asked for.
Yeah, I mean, it was, you know, personnel, teaching artists, and sound equipment.
Right. Um, I think I'm more inclined, you know, with the rental, you know, I'm really concerned about how COVID-19 has affected, you know, tenants and people that are unable to pay their rents right now. I know once, you know, you know, we've seen already that evictions are starting up again. The courts are starting to hear cases again. And so, I think I would be more inclined with adding that to the rental assistance monies.
Yeah, I certainly would agree with that. And, you know, we're going right back to, you know, kind of back to square one, you know, which is what I feel is the theory of, of the funds we've been giving out. And as much as I like what, you know, CCE does, you know, I don't really consider it as a, you know, a direct action about COVID. You know, I would let, rather see them be considered, you know, for the second round or even regular, the regular grants that we're handing out. You know, I don't know how everybody else feels about this. And, you know, this is something, you know, we've already voted on this. You know, I've, I'm a little hesitant to go back and start reopening what we've already done. I just think we might be, you know, opening up more than we want to hear about because there, you know, there were a lot of folks with good projects that didn't get, didn't get money based on our theory. And we all seem to agree on that. And this passed unanimously. So, you know, as Rita said, I would, any excess funds I would, I would like to use, you know, towards the ongoing COVID crisis. You know, I, you know, I don't see this as, you know, part of that. So, you know, I would be in favor of, you know, just holding on that money for the next round. What's everybody else? Anybody? Doug?
Yeah, I think it's good thinking. I think it's timely and, you know, it's certainly well-needed as Rita and Jeffrey have articulated. And then you, you too, Mr. Chairman, I would say let's, let's stick with that plan.
Okay, anybody else? Any comments? I think we kind of got everybody's feeling about this. All right, so I think that's a good plan.
Steve, Jeffrey has his hand up.
Anybody have any other? Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Jeffrey, sorry about that.
I was just going to ask, do we need to make a motion to, to add this, these funds to the unallocated 80,000?
Yes.
So, I would like to make a motion.
Okay, Jeffrey's made a motion. We have a second. Rita, a second. All in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, passed. Any other comments? Any other business? I think that's the end of our business. Everybody look good. I will take a motion. Somebody want, Jeffrey, motion to adjourn, second?
I second it.
Doug? All in favor? Anyone opposed to adjourning? Okay, once again, thanks for being here, Mayor. Thanks Andrea for running the meeting. Appreciate everybody being, being here tonight. All right? Thank you, folks. We will see you soon.
Thank you, Steve. Good night, everybody.
Thank you. Good night.